We're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to enter into executive session for the June 6, 2023 meeting. It is 6:48, is that right? 6:48. And can I have a motion to enter into exec?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll see you shortly. Oh, oh, sorry. Wait, sorry. We're going to go into executive session. I'll get this right almost. It's almost the end of the year. To discuss 2.1 negotiation matter BHAA, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 contract matter individual employee, and 2.4 board of education matter. So can I just get that motion again?
So moved.
Second. And all those in favor? Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Lara Stangle, the board president. Welcome to our June 6, 2023 board meeting. We entered into executive session at 6:48 where we discussed 2.1 negotiation matter, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 contract matter individual employee, and 2.4 board of education matter. Let's see. Can I ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we thank everyone for being here this evening. And I just have a little bit of business and then we'll get into the wonderful event you're all here for tonight. So I'm going to, yeah, okay. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? And I will recognize that Jason Berlin does not here this evening. And then can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which is personnel 6.1, special services 7.1, business 8.1.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And then we'll talk about our special recognition this evening of our tenure candidate. So we're very, very fortunate and very happy to have you all here. And I'm going to give it over to Jen in a moment. But I just wanted to say that this board is very grateful because we have implemented a different tenure protocol when we first began collaborating with our wonderful superintendent.
Thanks for that. I just like cugging Jen.
I like being cugged. It's a good relationship.
It is. It was a wonderful, the board had felt that we needed to be more involved with the tenure process, that we wanted to know about the candidates as they were starting out. And, you know, coming here to Byram, there's a, we always say we do things the Byram way, which is, we're very fortunate to have. Our children thrive and it's a wonderful place to work and be on a board. We all feel that way. We're very privileged with the, with all of the faculty and administrators that we have here. And the process is wonderful. We thank you, Tim and Jen, for everything that you do to bring that process to us and have us understand it. And so we're just excited to celebrate the candidates this evening.
All right. Turn it over to me.
Thank you. Over to you.
Let's talk first a little bit about tenure and what tenure means in Byram Hills. I've had tenure a few times and only because I've changed positions, right? So with each position, you lose your tenure and you take a risk to see if you'll be tenured again. Now I'm in the ultimate seat of you never get tenure. You're just on a revolving contract and they can let you go at any time. But I think six months notice or something, maybe I have. So something along those lines. Right, but.
You have to implement a procedure to understand.
Yes. So, so tenure is a big deal in Byram Hills because it is not just about checking all the boxes. It's about being a partner to the community with parents. Remember that as educators, we are seeing kids every single day. As parents, you have this one shot with this, let's say Dennis Covert, group of two that you have, right? And, and as a parent, sometimes you're not getting the bigger picture that a teacher gets from seeing kids and understanding how kids struggle and overcome difficulties and what it takes for kids to learn, right? So, so everybody who's here, who's part of this tenure process tonight, has been able to support parents in the community to let them know it's okay. Your child is fine. We can support your child with, whether it's learning needs or acceleration or getting along with friends. You know, one of my biggest questions, I am always asking like, who are the kids sitting with at lunch? Do they have friends? Like, how are they adapting to their environment? Are they working collaboratively with other kids? As parents, you don't always see that, right? Every once in a while, you have your own kids at home and they definitely are not the children that they are in school. But in school, our teachers see them, they start to learn about them and they understand them. And that community building with the parents is so important for parents. I am a parent. And when my, one of my children was young, it was a teacher who showed me something about my child that I didn't realize, right? So that's the lens that you come at for being a community member and a commitment to parents in the community. A commitment to children, I am pretty sure that every educator in here, whether you are Janine Marie DeFalco as an assistant principal, or you are Dana Celestino as a music teacher, you would take home every single child in your class, right? I know Janine Marie DeFalco, there was a boy who couldn't get on his bus on, he got on the bus Friday and nobody was there to receive him. Janine Marie stayed with this boy until after 6 o'clock, until his parents could come and pick him up, right? That kid had the time of his life. She has pictures of them playing basketball. They were, right? So this is, this is what it means to be a civil servant in a community, right? That, that it is all about that community. And not once did she complain about it. It was a Friday night. I don't think she even got that much thanks for it, but we were profusely thanking her. So tenure means that you're a part of a community and you're a community member. It also means that you are a part of the community of our school district, that you are working with your colleagues, you're listening. Mark, Mark is coming to us as our new fine arts director. Mark was talking tonight about listening, right? How important it is when you go into a role and you are in that role, that you are listening to your colleagues, that you are gaining an understanding of what they feel good about, what they're doing, what their needs are and learning from each other. So that is the second layer of tenure. The third layer of tenure is being really good at your craft. And that means studying and constantly learning. Somebody told a joke about me recently, Kim, Chris, or sorry. He said that when we first started teaching, he went, it was the last minute, class was going to start in like two minutes and he ran into the copy room to run off something for the class that was happening in five minutes that he pulled together. And I was in there and I said, oh, do you need the copier? And he said, no, you're, you're doing something. You can go ahead and finish. And I said, no, no, this stuff's for next year. Because that point, remember, this is pre-Interweb, right? So pre-internet, it was the time where you would do a lesson and then you would recraft that lesson and then you would stock it up for the following year, right? That isn't the case anymore. You know, we're always evolving and changing. And we learn so much from one year to the next. And that's the part of tenure that I love the most is that we have educators here who continue to be learning professionals, who are learning whatever it is that kids need to know how to do what they're doing. I think about the math department, a number of years ago, we brought in a consultant who developed lessons with math teachers and went into the math teachers' classrooms to implement the lessons and then have a talk and learn afterward. And we're going to do so much more of that too. But those are the educators that can open a book, they can open the book to their lives as educators and say, wow, what's in here and what else should I be filling in? So I'm so proud of the people who are here tonight who are receiving tenure because I think that you have successfully found inroads to all three of those things. The community member, the collaborator with your team, and the, the Byram Hills says, and the lifelong learner. But it really is true. So tonight, I want to talk a little bit about all of the tenure recipients. But first, I'm going to call you one by one and just ask you to stand so that everybody can clap and then I'm just going to say a few words about you. And I'm going to start with Susan Kiko. Susan. Actually, you know what? Yeah, I'll introduce everyone first. The next is Dana Celestino. Dana is music at Coleman Hill and at Wampus. And for physics, a science high school, Demis Covert. Special education at Wampus, Francesca DeLeo. I already introduced her, but assistant principal at Coleman Hill, Janine Marie DeFalco. Special education at Wampus, Allison Malone. And mathematics at the high school, Elise Sauer. Nate, how's she doing back there?
She's great.
Okay. Now, she introduced him as my husband, so I was just calling him the husband. All right. So a little bit about our tenure recipients tonight. So Susan, I'd like to start with you. Susan is a district-wide ENL teacher. That means that pretty much every child she encounters does not speak English as a first language. Can you imagine? And there, there have been children who don't speak English at all. What Susan does is she helps them to acclimate. These kids are sponges. They are learning language in no time. But it is incredibly important that they have Susan to be able to do that. She is, remember that first part of community that I was telling you about? Imagine being a parent in this community who doesn't speak English and trying to navigate our, our community correspondence, which now come in multiple languages, but, but not having that sense that you are even speaking the same language as those where you are sending your child, right? Knowing that your child is going to a new place and will have to learn a new language. It might be facing very, very interesting struggles, right? So Susan is really that platform, helping every child to get over that hill until they start to process language and use that language. And you've been so incredibly successful. And you, I even know this about you. There are some times that we have changes in schedules, so Susan will not have the students that she's supposed to be seeing. And technically, she doesn't have to make up that time, but she makes the time up on her own time because she wants to make sure that the kids are getting every service that they should be getting. So know that we know even that little piece about you, but that that goes a very long way. They always say it's about what you're doing when no one's looking. You didn't think we were looking, but we were. So thank you. I know that you have your family here tonight and they are probably very proud of you, those gorgeous flowers. And I just want to thank you. And once again, congratulations, Susan. Dana Celestino. So I've met Dana's parents. They're flanking her right now. I think, I would like to know, how many performances at Byram Hills have you been to?
All of them.
All of them. That's exactly right. I've met them on numerous occasions. You met my husband. They are, they are our biggest Byram Hills fans. You can bring anyone you want with you from now on.
I have a lot of rabbit tickets too. I buy so many rabbit tickets.
Thank you.
And Dana, from very, from very early on, you never hesitate with a group of kids. If the superintendent walks into your classroom and you see me, you say, guess who's here, everyone? And the next thing I know, I'm involved in whatever it is that you're teaching those kids. You bring such joy to those children and that's what music should be. I remember piano lessons. Now, I know it's different because you're a chorus. But when I was a kid and I took piano lessons and it was a drudge because I had to sit in that waiting room while my sister had lessons and my brother had lessons. And I had to sit on that uncomfortable chair and wait. And that, you know, was my early childhood experience with music. To see kids that are in your class and they're singing and they love it. And to see the numbers of kids now at the middle school that are in those chorus groups, that is a testament to everything that you're doing at those younger ages. So thank you. It is super fun to be around you and I know that a lot of kids pick you as their favorite. So thank you for that. You've done so much for the program. You're awesome.
Thank you so much.
Proud mom and dad. Dennis Covert. So Dennis Covert and I knew each other back in the day when Dennis was my son's baseball coach. Little known fact. And lived in Clarkstown and Harry was on the team with my son as well. And I would see Dennis's family at all of these games and we had a physics opening. And I said, Dennis, would you consider applying for this position, thinking never in a million years, would somebody who is vested in another district for so many years want to come here? Now, Dennis is a physics teacher. I would say that I, you probably have as good of a chance of winning the lottery as you do of finding a physics teacher. So, I mean, really, it's very difficult, right? So Dennis was one of the candidates. Fortunately, we're Byram Hills, so we had a very large group of candidates who were vying for the job. And I don't know until the very end who the committee selects and the committee selected Dennis. One of, in his first year, I remember I was out in the woods with operations and maintenance. Remember Kelly? We were walking through the woods getting ticks. We were, we were examining the cross-country route through the, through the woods so our insurance company could come, make sure it was safe for kids, et cetera. And we came out onto the field and if you know seniors, you know that in those last two days before seniors leave, they're lunatics. Dennis had all of the seniors outside and he was playing wiffle ball and the kids were, whatever they were doing, then they were running over to this table and they were tallying all sorts of stuff. Somehow he turned wiffle ball into physics. I went to the high school pretty recently and one of the groups was outside and Dennis said, oh, you know, you should go out. Right now, we're measuring the speed of sound. And I thought, oh, how elementary. You know, they're measuring the scene, the speed of sound outside. What you've done for the kids in the high school has been tremendous. I love that I go to a football game and you're there with your lovely wife on a Saturday to cheer on the Byram Hills teams. You're doing so much after school with coaching. Now you're coaching baseball here and we're so proud of that. So thank you for taking the long drive and for investing in this community in such an intense way. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Francesca DeLeo. Oh, I want to do that one more time. Francesca DeLeo. You got such a beautiful applause. All right. So Francesca left Byram Hills as an aide. It, it would not be the norm that necessarily an aide would transition into a classroom in Byram Hills. She was an aide in Byram Hills, left Byram Hills, got experience and came back and we were ever so happy to receive you. And I would say that some of the accolades that I hear about you very often are your ability in an integrated co-teach class to work with teachers and to help to develop the skills of how to teach kids and differentiate across the board. So I know that your teachers in your building all want to partner with you. This is like if they could pick you, if you could have like a, who would you pick on your team, you know, and your kids? They would pick you on the team first. And that says so much to, in such a short amount of time, have gotten the confidence from all of these veteran educators around you that they want to work with you and they want to be with you. And that's a testament to all the work you did out there before you came back. And I think Peggy, was it you who said you could benefit from some experience, right? Outside of Byram Hills and come back? And you did. So I want to thank you for listening to that advice and for not being afraid to venture out, learn and come back here and, and teach and learn. So congratulations to you. Janine Marie DeFalco. What can I say about you, other than the fact that you stay, you're free babysitting on Friday nights? Other than that, it is you are now working with Peggy McInerney, a veteran principal. But this is the third principal that you've worked with in your Byram Hills career. You, you not only worked with three different principals, you were an assistant principal, new in a school, and you never even saw what a normal year looked like. You were thrust into COVID and spacing kids six feet apart. And I have to say that one day, Janine Marie loves everything Disney and she loves everything sparkling. And, and all the kids love it. Everything about her just sparkles. Even when she smiles, sparkles come out. And there was a day where I was shopping and I found this beautiful, sparkly bag. And I said, Janine Marie DeFalco. I never, I don't know if I've ever done that before. I was like, this is so, this is going to be weird. Your superintendent's going to show up and be like, I bought you this beautiful bag at Kate's Bay. But I did because that's you. And that same heart that stayed with that student Friday night and that same heart that helped to navigate that building through COVID and your love of everyone in that building just made me have to abandon, you know, supervisor, whatever, at that exact moment and just say how much you're appreciated and loved. So congratulations to you, Janine Marie. Allison. So I can't go into too much detail about the student whose life Allison changed. But you changed a child's life. And this is a child who struggled so desperately prior to having you and your partner. I see you're holding hands. Struggled so desperately before this child came into your class, so desperately and like, and in ways that I can't share publicly, right? That child, upon meeting you, you changed that child's life. And that kid is the best kid ever. And now we are going to see this kid move on and flourish in a way that I don't know people thought was possible. And you understood this child and you understood how to meet this child where the child was. So I love those special instances where you can always look back at your Byram Hills career and say, I know what I did in that case and I'm proud of it, right? And just, that's, that's the community part of never giving up. I mean, you, I don't even think you ever contemplated giving up on this child, right? It wasn't even an issue. And now this child is thriving, absolutely thriving. It's not just one kid, but it's every kid. So that one is going to stick out of my mind for all eternity because it's a kid that I love. And I love that you love this child also. So thank you for being that big-hearted teacher who could not only get a kid, but have a kid take a different trajectory in life. So congratulations to you. And the last one, Elise. Elise Sauer. So Elise, um, Elise is back there with her mom and dad and husband Nate. And Elise came to the math department and, and it was a very interesting time when you arrived as well, correct? A lot of changes happened, not only in the math curriculum, a lot of changes happened to us as a school. You had the whole reshifting and then shifting back to normal life. And in all of that time, that investment in the community that I was talking about before, you did. The math department, Lisa, you can attest to this. I mean, they, they are, they are a conglomeration, right? When you go up to the math department, every math department person is in the department office when they're not teaching. They're collaborating, they're talking, they're planning. If I have the opportunity to leave at around 5:30 or 6 o'clock, which really doesn't happen, but if I do, I drive out the parking lot and I see the math teachers coming out. And I'm like, they've been here since 7:30 this morning and you're one of them, right? They all stay up there, they work so hard together. I also, you took over Muappa Theta this year. You are doing so much for professional development. So I would say the entire well-rounded teacher is somebody that you've become here. And it's not easy to do in Byram Hills, in the math department, through COVID, with the change in curriculum. So for you to receive these accolades tonight says just so much about you. I know you are very loved in your department and congratulations to you. And that is my report on the tenure candidates. Now you have what Marge Nolan, a teacher from, remember Marge? When I first came to Byram Hills, there was a teacher named Marge Nolan.
She has to refer to.
And she said, well, Kim, I'm sorry, you've been here as long as I have. Marge Nolan used to talk about 14-carat gold handcuffs. Like you get here and then, and you just clip on and you never leave. So I hope that you all feel that great connection to Byram Hills. And thank you so much for everything you've done to get to this point in your careers. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so something very exciting, awesome. Right. This is our line. So we waited until the report to talk about the tenure recipients, but something really exciting happened when we did our consent agenda as well. So we have some people who are being appointed tonight. Some are here and some are not here, but I would like to say all of them. First, we have our very own Ashley Morales, high school special education teacher. Ashley was a leave for this year and she applied for and was granted the job for special education teacher at the high school for this year. Congrats, Ashley. We have Doug Coats, who is not here, but he will be our new music teacher at HCC and the high school. We have Marissa Mitchell Elementary, who is not here also tonight. Kyla Oliver. We have Jen Pico and, hold on a second. Oh, yeah. And Kirsten Russell. We also should have on the agenda the administrators.
Yeah, here.
Oh, good, good, good. Phew. Okay. So we have two administrators here who are joining us also tonight. Mark Beja. Now, Mark, you want to stand? You could just say hi.
Sing a little song.
Mark will be the new director of fine arts. Mark, can you sing a little something a cappella?
Only Disney, only Disney.
I wasn't kidding. No, I'm kidding. Don't do that. We also have Jennifer Sporelli here tonight, who will be our new assistant principal at Byram Hills High School. I want to ask you to experience both as an assistant principal and a principal. So we are so excited to have you. Yes. Chris will not have to teach e-school, to warn you. That is fantastic. All right, thank you.
I think I've covered it.
So I think, yes, and I think we'll take a few moments just to congratulate you and then we're going to let you go. Then we'll reconvene. Have that. And thank you to friends and family. Yes, thank you all. Congrats. Thank you for that. That was a wonderful presentation of the tenure candidates and our new appointments. So now we're up to special report number two. Is that what we're going to? Okay. Thank you to Tim for the literacy study update.
Okay, thank you. So I've spoken several times this year about our work on the literacy study group. And I want to thank Melissa Jacobs and Lara Stangle, who were board members on that study, as well as our parent community and our teachers who all participated. If we had five sessions throughout the year and all this information is on our website, I'll provide you with a QR code so those watching at home can access all of the information. So I want to provide with you this evening our takeaways from that meeting. I have a pretty extensive slideshow, so I won't go through it all in detail and rehash our 10 hours of work together. But these slides will be on our website and those viewing and our board members can access this information. But I do want to just make a few highlights and talk to you about what we're doing now that that study has finished and the work that we're doing with our faculty going forward as we continue to study and learn from what we know about how kids learn to read and write and what we're doing together. So a few things to point out was the purpose of our group. In the spirit of continuous improvement, we're always look at various curricular areas and think about and reflect upon our current curriculum and think about any areas we need to improve upon. So that is part of our natural cycle. Given that there was a lot of people writing about literacy over the past couple of years, we thought it was good to just bring a study group together to sort of slow our process down a little bit and think about, well, what does all this mean that we're reading about in the media? And let's make sense of it with some experts and with our amazing faculty and parent community together. So that was the purpose of the study. We had two expert researchers facilitate the meetings. We had five evening meetings. It included a variety of people from our district and our parent community. We also had some additional public meetings so other parents could join in on the conversation. And again, there was a QR code that you can follow at home that has all the information, including the slide presentations and additional readings and resources that were provided to us. I will post these slides as well after this evening's presentation. So some things that we've done since we began looking at literacy since the end of last year. So for one is. So for one is we trained all of our special education teachers in kindergarten through fifth grade in what is called the Orton McGillanham approach, which is a multi-sensory approach to teaching students how to read. They learn strategies and our special education teachers have been implementing these strategies immediately, things that's very applicable in the immediate in our classrooms. In every meeting I go to with teachers, they talk about and tell me how valuable that experience was for them. We also have trained any new teacher and any other teacher who has switched grade levels recently in foundations. Foundations is our phonics program. That is where students learn to decode and encode, to learn the basics and foundations of reading. We also are offering a variety of literacy workshops on our website for the summer and into next year. And we are in the process now of developing a three- to five-year literacy plan in collaboration with our classroom teachers and engaging all of our faculty in that discussion. So I started to take these slides and go around to every elementary classroom with a group of teachers and talk about, with the teachers, what our takeaways were and to hear what they see as our immediate needs so that we can start developing this plan with our teachers. Our teachers have incredible knowledge about how kids respond to our curriculum, our current curriculum. They've spent many years studying together and writing curriculum. Since the pandemic, you know that we adopted the Wonders literacy curriculum and we're now reflecting upon how well is that working? Does it align with what we think are best practices for kids and with the research? And we'll start to explore those questions as we start to do this work with our teachers. But we have to involve our classroom teachers at the very ground level because they're the ones who work day-to-day with our children. So we're starting those conversations. I've had all but one classroom I'll meet with next week and starting to keep a list of what do they see as their priority. And then with Peggy, with Dave, with Kim Sapone, we'll be developing, and again, in conjunction with our classroom teachers, developing what our goals are for the next few years. So we organized our takeaways into six themes. I have a lot of slides that follow, but I'm not going to go through the details of every slide, but we'll make a few highlights. One of our themes was that teaching reading is complex and I'll talk about why in a moment. We know that curriculum instruction benefits students, but differentiation is extremely important. And by that we mean we have to meet the kids where they are developmentally and then get them to the grade level standards in learning to read and give them the skills that they need to read and write. We have to make sure our curriculum and assessments are aligned to the standards. Students need access to a variety of texts and resources. And communication is also important. That's something that we heard from our parents on the committee is they want to know what's happening in our classrooms, what our curriculum is. And the more we engage them in what we're doing in the classrooms, the more they feel connected and they understand what we're doing. And then we also realize we have a lot of questions still. And one point to make about that is we had two researchers who are amazing researchers in their field, highly respected, and they often would have some slight disagreements on interpretation of research in terms of practice. And I've been listening to a lot of podcasts and I'll hear researchers argue about other researchers criticizing them. And here are these debates going on in academia in terms of the application of the research. So even though I know I read this research and these researchers are reading it, interpretation of research is, makes all the difference. So we always have a lot to learn. There's always a lot of questions and we may interpret the knowledge base and the research about reading and writing differently. And we just have to make sure we, as a community and as a faculty and parents, have the same interpretations and we explain our reasoning. So that was an interesting just takeaway and acknowledgement. So just a couple of points I want to make as I go through a few of these slides. In terms of reading is complex, one thing that really stood out to us is that our brains are not hardwired to learn to read, that we actually have to reform the neural pathway of the brain. And that's why you hear, when you hear people talking about reading, you'll hear them say you need a, you need a systematic approach and an explicit approach to reading. And that's where that phonics piece comes in, but you have to be explicit and you have to have a scope and sequence and be very deliberate about it. Because what you're doing is reforming the neural pathways so that students go from oral language to the written word. And that has to be very explicitly taught. And that was just interesting to get into that brain science a little bit. There's something that a researcher and psychologist named Hollis Scarborough sort of put together what she saw as the main pieces of writing. It's known as the Scarborough's reading rope. These have these elements broken up into two categories, language comprehension and word recognition. In each of those categories are some elements or the aspects of reading. We talk about these as the pillars of reading. And that these pillars are extremely important and have to be explicitly taught. Everything from background knowledge, vocabulary, to decoding and sight recognition. Those all are explicit and they are not that one comes before the other. They all need to happen simultaneously with an emphasis on different areas of those depending on the developmental stage of the students. So even though students might still be learning to decode, you can still work on vocabulary and background knowledge and language structure at the same time. But with young learners, you're not going to spend as much time there, but it's still important to be explicit in those things. So this has been a good framework for us that's guiding us a little bit. Several years later, a researcher took that concept and came up with a writing rope. This is relatively new and we're looking at this as a possible way to help frame our writing approach with kids. Breaks it down into key components and areas of what kids need to be successful writers. So these two structures are really helpful to us in terms of organizing the scope and sequence of our work as we go from kindergarten through fifth grade and beyond. So it's helping us just look at these various strands to make sure developmentally we're consistent as we go through the grade levels. And that's been important to us. As we continued to study how students learn to read, we talked a bit about dyslexia. We spent a half a session on that and recognized that we have a lot to learn about dyslexia. So our teachers are interested in this. It's been something, there's still a lot of mystery around. A lot of us have misconceptions of what dyslexia is. So we have acknowledged that this is an area we want to do some professional learning around so that we can deepen our knowledge to make sure that we're meeting kids' needs when there may be red flags for dyslexia. It was sort of highlighted to us, it's sort of an aha moment for me, is that there's not a single test for diagnosing dyslexia. So it's complicated and kids could struggle in their learning to read for various reasons. And whether it's a learning disability or not is something that you might not know till later. So while it's, it's sort of a dilemma, you might not know till kids get older that it's actually dyslexia, but you need to have early intervention in kindergarten and first grade to make sure you get kids up to speed in learning how to read before they get too late in their development because that just becomes harder to catch kids up. Not that you can't, but it's harder. So we're putting those resources into early intervention and into our screening and supportive students in kindergarten and first grade to really focus on that at the beginning right now as we develop a very systematic approach to our interventions.
The interesting thing with dyslexia, and we can't diagnose dyslexia.
Right.
But there are some institutions that say it's appropriate to say students are dyslexic if they're having reading problems, right? So this, it's like good for people to make that distinction when you're hearing that. And there are statistics that X percentage of kids, of individuals are dyslexic, right? But does that dyslexia mean that they are having a reading problem or not?
Right.
Some people are willing to give the term dyslexia to mean something that is not diagnosed dyslexia.
Right, and it can manifest itself in a lot of ways.
Sure.
Students display those signs of dyslexia. So it's something that's important for us to understand, so we want to dive deeper into that.
And I think it's, in institutions doing that is showing a little more fluidity to say we want to address kids with reading problems in a certain way and we'll give it this umbrella of dyslexia, right? I mean, whatever the reasons are for them doing that, but I think that that's it. And I know that there are a lot of states that mandate dyslexia screeners. New York isn't one of them, right? So there's like a lot of progress to be made there. Institutions who are labeling people dyslexic when they haven't done a dyslexia test, it's really to try to combat this, a reading issue, right? So no fault.
How do they screen them if there isn't a single test? How do they even screen?
I think they're in neuropsych evaluation.
Right, for, there's psychological evaluations and neurological evaluations that can be done, but it's also then, I think it becomes easier to diagnose that a student can read later, but it's, their issues were because of dyslexia.
But a neuropsych workup is a fortune. So these states that are mandating.
Yeah, I don't know what these screenings look like. That's more for us to unpack over time, but I am curious what they look like and what they're finding. Like even if we gave a screener like that, we would not be able to label a child as dyslexic, but we would at least be able to see what the difficulties are that they're having. So, you know, I think people have to throw out caution of labeling or not labeling. It's just identify what the learning needs are so that you can meet them.
And address those skill levels.
Until a bigger power decides how we're going to manage this, right?
Yeah, one of our researchers noted that there was some preliminary research done on a possible assessment that could be, have high probability of diagnosing or at least recognizing if a student is dyslexic. It was early in its research, but it was promising. So, you know, it could be on the path to that. And I wouldn't be surprised if we do make considerable progress given the advancements of research with our brain scanning and what we're able to do to actually look at the brain as kids are reading and writing and see where there's problem areas. So hopefully lots of advancement in that area.
And maybe not in the very early grades, but certainly in elementary school as you progress. You're spending a lot of time on other subject areas, whether that's math or social studies or science, but there's still a lot of reading involved. Are there ways in which some of these, you know, these approaches kind of get fed into those or is it the tough?
Yeah, let me go to my next slide. See, that was a perfect segue to cover. What we talked a lot about was the importance of disciplinary knowledge in reading and that having content-rich curriculum and integrating it with learning to read and write at the same time is beneficial to students. So for example, what I note there at the beginning, there was been a classic research study in the eighties that has been replicated many times that takes two groups of kids, kids that struggle with reading and kids who are strong readers. And then they gave them a passage on baseball. It was a passage around baseball that kids had to, it was basically a comprehension test. Kids had to retell the story using physical objects. And they separated each group into two groups, kids who knew something about baseball and kids who knew nothing about baseball. And what turned out is the kids who were poor readers, according to the screening, outperformed the strong readers, the kids who had knowledge of baseball. So what that is demonstrating is that your content and background knowledge makes you outperform your reading level. And you actually outperform strong readers who don't have the content or background knowledge, which has led a lot of research in the area of doing a lot of integration of content into reading curriculum. So the curriculum we're currently using, for example, is Wonders and that integrates science and social studies into reading. So there's a lot of content knowledge because what happens is you're increasing vocabulary, content algebra vocabulary, you're working on the comprehension of that content. So we know that background knowledge helps elevate students' ability to read. So for example, if you have a high interest in a particular subject, you can give kids more challenging books that are beyond grade level or beyond their even reading level and they're able to, their comprehension is still manageable in those types of tests. If it's something that they're not as interested in or if it's something really new, you don't want the books to exceed their reading level. You want it to be at or a little below so that they can access the information. So that's leading us to looking at more interdisciplinary and more inter-curricular with reading with the content. And it's more efficient in schools as well. So we've been having some conversations around those, at those issues as well. So, thanks for that question. Here's just some more information about texts. We know that we, the materials, the classroom materials we have for students is really important. We know we need some common texts for kids to read together as a class, but you also want differentiated texts. You want students reading books of interest because again, you can have them reading at higher levels and that increases their vocabulary and their background knowledge, which is A few other things. We know we want to revise our multi-tiered systems of support. This should be MTSS plan. So we know we need to review that plan, make it more detailed, which is leading us to do an assessment audit, which means looking at all the assessments we give at the elementary level, both math assessments, reading assessments, curricular-based standardized tests and making sure what are we doing and what's its purpose and are we being efficient in the types of assessments that we're offering students. So I'm going to put together a team of teachers this summer to begin looking at our MTSS plan and revising that and then starting an assessment audit next year so we can really streamline our assessments. I'll just go through a few more things, again, more about the resources we have. And going to the slide on parent knowledge. Again, we know that our parents want to be involved. They want information about what we're doing, so we're starting to have conversations about doing some parent nights around reading. I know I facilitated some of those nights around math many years ago. We did some math nights and maybe we'll have some reading nights where we can talk to parents about how to help and support your child at home and how that aligns with the current work that we're doing in the classroom. And there's still a lot of questions. And so these are some of the questions that came up just now in our discussion. How do we maintain that continuity? What are we to differentiate? How do we support our students who are struggling? So these are the questions that we are grappling together with our classroom teachers and starting to look at our curriculum and sort of go through it and review it, refine it where necessary, revise where necessary, replace if we have to, and do some new curriculum writing with our classroom teachers. That covers some of it. Some of the next steps, talking to you, talking to classroom teachers and continuing to find ways to engage with our parent community with this work as well. So these are some of the areas I mentioned this evening, an assessment audit, an audit looking at the types of texts we're looking, looking at integrating content knowledge into our literacy curriculum. These are some of the areas we've been talking about at the grade level meetings as well as many others as we start to develop our plan to go forward. And how do we get all that work done? We have various structures, so I look at the way that we have structures within the school year to do that work. And these are just a variety of ways to actually, how we get the work done as we go. As teachers are teaching at the same time and doing all they have to do to plan, we have to find ways to have some time so that we can think about this work and revise our curriculum. Talk about that, but I want to again, thank everybody who's been involved in this and particularly thank our classroom teachers who are really rolling up their sleeves and were getting down to do the hard work. Thank everybody. And thank you for your support and supporting us in this work.
Thank you so much.
It was incredibly depth. Really, it was a pleasure to be a part of it and learning all that.
It's good work, a lot of good work. Thank you.
Tim, I have to say another deputy superintendent in another place, not here, would have taken on this topic, right? And would have probably just selected a reading text for everybody to use and hired outside consultants to turnkey, whatever it is. You studied it yourself, you met with parents, you got really great feedback, you had an open mind to meeting with people who had opinions about it. You researched everyone you could have possibly researched. I mean, he texted me a picture of a podcast, well Gina did, the three of us really crazy. This morning at like 7 o'clock, this podcast and Tim had listened to also, right? So, you know, listening to, listening to whatever you can, finding out whatever you can, finding the researchers, getting the professionals to come in, including teachers, parents, administrators in on that. And now not going to the teachers and saying, so I've done this study and this is what we shall do, right? But going to teachers and saying, so the study gives us a direction, but you as educators are going to guide this ship, right? And, and having that confidence in your knowledge base to be able to say that that should happen and that's the way things should be is pretty incredible. So I don't know that we would find the Tim Coltenekker of any other district doing the work that you did on this and liking it, right? That's the key, the key. The key is that you have totally geeked out on this and love it. And every child here is better for it. So thank you for being a really good listener to the community, to the teachers, to everyone.
Well, thanks for having partners who geek out too. They love it as well. So I'm not the only one. We share our knowledge.
Extraordinary, really extraordinary.
Thanks to our teachers. Much of this they've studied over the years and know it as well. But our teachers are always willing to, let's look at this with fresh eyes and think about it again in light of where we are today.
It's a great model for how to conquer something that's complicated and involves.
What's hard is going slow. And I know that can be frustrating for some parents who, if you have a kid who's struggling now, you want something now. And I understand that. And I think we've had a lot of successes and we have a lot of students who succeed. But we have to recognize that there are still kids who struggle and we want to help everybody and make sure our curriculum is accessible for every child. And that's important to me. And so recognizing there are children out there who are struggling to read and we're going to help them and help those parents as well.
And the board, you know, understands and appreciates all the hard. The board, you know, understands and appreciates all the hard work that you do and that all of you do, so we are very appreciative of it. We thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, yes, yay.
Thank you. Good partners.
You're not done yet.
What's next?
I think we're going into, no, no. We have, we have policy. Oh yeah, policy. We have 11.
You may want to get a drink of water.
Do you want to take a break?
Nope, because Gina's going to start us.
Oh, there you go.
So we have three different groups of policies tonight, but for our first read, I'm going to talk about policy 4321.5, which is entitled confidentiality and access to individualized education programs, individualized education services programs and service plans. So essentially the first part of this policy talks about ensuring that the personally identifiable student data for students who have disabilities, that that information is not disclosed to anyone outside of the district except for a parent. And then certainly if there was written consent or subpoenaed legally, that that would be the only times in which that that information is shared. It also speaks to the physical security that we're responsible for, ensuring that individual education plans are, are stored in a safe place. And also that we have a process for, at the end of each year, as an IEP expires, that we have a process for destroying those documents safely. The second part of the policy talks about IEP documents and notifications of responsibilities. So in this particular part, it identifies the roles of those employees who are responsible for creating an IEP and implementing an IEP. Also that anyone who provides a service to a child is notified that there is an IEP and that they have access to that IEP to ensure that they're aware of what accommodations, modifications, et cetera, need to be implemented. And then finally, that anyone else who has any contact with the student, a general education teacher, another special education teacher, or another service provider also has information pertaining to that student so they too can implement the accommodations and the modifications.
Yeah, Gina, I'll just add that this is a sub-policy of our special education policies. There's, I don't know, 15 or 12, there's a bunch. So we're in the process of chipping away at those over time with the policy committee. So thanks Gina. And then the next policy is homeless children, policy 5151. We've reviewed this and updated it several times. There was a small change in regulations and we wanted to update this policy, which is under item number one, the second number one below. It's about participation and just adding the line that homeless children will have the same opportunity as other children to enroll in and succeed in the district schools, including extracurricular activities and summer school programs available to district students. So it was the summer and extracurricular activities that the regulation wanted clarification in the policy. It was always allowable, but we were adding that clarification that homeless children could have that access just to be explicit.
How does that work if you're homeless, but you don't maintain a residence in the district? How does that, how does that work? What classifies?
What classifies you as homeless?
As homeless and your right to attend this district. So if you do not have a legal residence as a home, let's say you're a homeowner here and you're evicted, or you sell your home and you can't find another place to live and you have to stay in a hotel or a shelter or with somebody else, you're turned homeless. So you can continue to go to school here. Gotcha. And is there any limit on that? The second you get a lease or something, anything like that, right? Then you're gone. But not gone necessarily, because if the child starts school in September, unless they're a senior, they have until December. Like let's say something changes in October. It's best for the child to be there for the full semester. And if you're a senior, you actually can stay the year.
And it could be a school of origin as well. So if you had attended the school, became homeless, but maybe you ended up moving, you could come back and go to that school. School of origin is defined in the policy as well.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
So we updated that policy to keep it current. And then we have two second read policies, which we outlined at the last meeting in detail. It's the annual district election and budget vote. That's policy 1050 and pandemic planning, policy 8131. If there's any additional questions on either of those policies, there weren't major changes to those, a few tweaks at the last meeting. And then our annual review, Gina?
So then we have several policies for annual review, the first being 1900, which is parental involvement. And this policy outlines obviously our support for parents being involved in their, their child's education, achievement and school community. The only change that we made was we removed the Bobcat boosters as that's no longer in existence, but otherwise it's a very brief policy, but we have to review that annually. So that's 1900. The second one is 5300, which is our code of conduct. And as the policy committee knows, we began to review this document. It's quite extensive in terms of our code of conduct. We did make some initial changes, but we would like to continue to work on this over the course of the summer and bring it back to the Board of Ed for a second read in the fall. There's just some things that need to be updated, some language that needs to be modernized perhaps. And we just want to have some more time to work, chip away at that.
And then we have investments, which is policy 6240. This policy describes the types of investments that the district may authorize and the conditions for which to authorize those investments. Kelly and Susan are familiar with this policy and also the second one, purchasing, policy 6700. And these are current, Kelly has reviewed these to make sure these are actually the policies, the procedures that we follow. And purchasing is the, the procedures for around which we procure items for the district. And there's a regulation, which is the actual step-by-step process. And we do follow these processes. So purchasing includes competitive bidding, other contracts of purchasing, and then the methods of procurement. And there were some minor changes in these policies, but not significant.
Thank you so much to the policy committee and.
We'll take a vote and then Petrie does have a presentation from the policy committee, but you could vote on these first if you'd like.
Thank you. So let's, can I have a motion to approve a first read of policy 4321.5 and 5151? And then a second read of 1050, 8131? And a policy for annual review, 1900? A first read of 5300? A first read of 6240? Of 6700? And 6700-r? Can I have a motion with, thank you, and all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
So the policy committee wants to give an end of year review. So turn it over to you, Petrie.
Our year review for the policy committee.
Wow.
These are 30 policies that we have revised and updated during the course of the year. Some were easier than others. The big one I think everyone's familiar with is field trips and excursions, which took a lot of collaboration with administrators and teachers to kind of fine tune that and hone that down for the students with upcoming trips abroad or, or within the state. So that was the big one that we covered. Let's see, and then next slide, we have the legally required policies and adopted dates. All of these are up to date and within compliance with the state law. It's important to note that these are under constant review and revision, especially some of the older ones that approach the 10-year-old mark. We try to keep them up to date and, you know, in compliance with the state law, as well as complementing other Byron Hills policies that we have in place and keep things up to date to how we operate our district. And so it's, and then annual review, Tim and Gina just covered that. So any input that may have on those policies, let us know and we can discuss it over time. I want to thank Jen, Tim, Kelly and Gina for all the hard work and background, as well as me and Jason, who are also on the policy committee, and all the other board members for their input and review during the course of the year.
And this is what the board members look like every time we have a policy committee meeting. A child up there in the room.
We act happy. It's a joy, right?
They're touching in curiosity or they're smiling.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you to the policy committee, all the hard work this year. We appreciate it. Such important work to keep these up to date and we know how much beyond what the committee does itself, when you meet, it's a lot of work behind the scenes and research, and so we appreciate that. Okay, I think you're still up, Tim.
One more thing and I'll do it with the site-based team, end of year reports. I want to thank our principals and I want to thank all the parents and the faculty who work with the site-based team to approve our programs and involve parents in everything we do at the building. So K5, this year the site-based teams are focusing on our social emotional learning. We help our students with wellness, with rigor at the same time. You heard a presentation from Dave Mack and Annie Schmidt at Wampus in February around Character Strong. It is a program we're piloting, so we're going to do another pilot next year. We'll be in the third year of piloting that in Wampus. We're piloting it in Comen Hill as well. And I expect that will come back to you mid-year next year to adopt that program, which is sort of around character and wellness. And having Annie Schmidt as a counselor at Wampus has been phenomenal to implement. And she is working with classroom teachers as well, as you'll recall from our curriculum conversation with her. So both Comen Hill and Wampus focused on Character Strong. At the middle school, Kim and Angelo have been working with continuing to create healthy mindset and social wellness with students. And they have three students, three questions that they're exploring with the wellness committee around this idea of how do we build student self-confidence? How do we develop good communication skills? And how to be a good caring friend, neighbor and classmate? So that is fairly middle school and Kim and Angelo do a lot of work with that. They're going to be, they're creating a summer program where we're bringing in a consultant we worked with years ago through Facing History in Ourselves that did some interdisciplinary work. Terrific work in our district and a lot of those lessons still exist today. Kim has maintained a relationship with Peter Nelson. He's going to come in and work on helping teachers in the community develop ways that we address these questions with our students. And so we have some, a team of teachers coming in this summer to work with Kim and Angelo and we'll integrate that into the curriculum going into next year. At the high school, Chris focused on leadership. He talked about it many times when he visited the board, that that was added to our mission statement. So he engaged his faculty in processes throughout the year of how do we build leadership into our curriculum so that we approach it that all kids are developing skills to be a leader? And he used the Cusson Posner framework that we use in Global Scholars around it has five principles, model the way, inspire a shared vision, challenge the process, enable others to act and encourage the heart. So he's continuing to work with his faculty and he was very explicit throughout this year, engaging them in that conversation. It was really terrific work. So again, I want to thank our principals and thank our, all of our administrators and teachers who work on the site-based team and our parents. Thank you.
Does Dave Mack have those monthly town hall meetings with the grades?
His community meetings.
Every Friday, I couldn't stop due to the pandemic.
Yeah, Dave is doing community meetings as well.
That's great.
Right, yeah. And that's a good way to.
Give kids voice.
Right.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
How big is each site-based team?
So we have in the buildings, we have site-based team. It varies. I think there's like three or four parents and then there's teachers involved. And then we have our district-wide committee, which is those people which, and more parents get involved. So we meet twice a year as a district and some parents who maybe aren't on the building teams come to the district-wide teams and meet with us.
And do the building teams meet every quarter or?
They meet about monthly or so, maybe six weeks, depending on the project and the need. So sometimes they get intensive work that they're doing and they'll need a little more frequent.
Okay, thank you so much. And thanks to the site-based teams. We appreciate all the hard work.
It's great.
And once again, Tim continued with site-based teams when they were not even required.
No, I went to find the regulation and it was just gone. It just doesn't exist anymore. If Ira were here, he would talk about, he remembers when site-based teams was instituted and that's how he got involved in the schools.
But it seems like it serves a really good purpose.
It does and we continue to do it because it's a way to have our parents be working with us. It's a great way to involve parents and it gets us doing some really great work.
Very collaborative, yeah. We're still talking about you, Ira. If you're watching. Okay, Jen, thank you for staff reports. Tim, can you get me to slide 190?
Yeah, I think I have your presentation.
I just shared it with you.
Okay.
Oh, this is so great. So first we have Comen Hill Beautification. Look at that. This is the kids who are earning their earth and sky badge for the first grade daisy group. I was a daisy once. 1217, they planted flowers at the school entrance and in the front doors. Thank you to the Comen Hill Beautification Committee for helping to coordinate. These kids are adorable. Look at them. Look at those little patches. I remember you had to earn those patches. Comen Hill Music, this was so much fun. On the 18th and the 19th, we had some show performances for first and second grade. Parents were there. It was a fantastic opportunity.
God, I remember that.
And the best part was the, yes, the songs are amazing. And then the next one, which they did was Kindness Day. My favorite part of this was standing next to a Byram Hills High School senior who's interning over there, who was actually singing the Comen Hill song. That she remembered, that she remembered. But they did a great job over there. Jamie Carp was, was really great and Bernice Pagan, they helped to run it. They read a story to the group. They did some singing and some dancing. It was very adorable. Kids had a great time. Moving on to, moving on to Wampus, right? Remember the biography museum? Dress, dress as your famous person and do these little bobble heads. So the kids did it again. They had to study a person who made a difference in the world for their biography units. Much enjoyed by all. I think you've seen this name like 10 times this year, right? Sean Segal, Con Ed Scholar Athlete of the Week, Varsity Boys Lacrosse Congratulations Series, just an outstanding, outstanding student and scholar athlete. This is so much fun and something I've never really seen before, right? Ethan Sutton received the President's Award. And, and this is for his film called Doll. And he submitted this, if you take a look at, there were 251 high school students who submitted 475 works of art and 32 short films. And Ethan was one of only seven students to win the President's Award.
Amazing.
It's amazing. And even his picture is like very, you know.
Yeah, phishtick.
Yeah, like he's going to be a movie director and producer. Here we have our Authentic Science Research students. We have Chloe Bernstein, Samantha Milwitz and Emily Stangle, winning awards at the ISEF Science Competition. We were watching that, like the Grammys or the Emmys or I don't, I don't even know. We were getting pictures. We were getting these updates. I felt like this is what people must feel like when they're on Twitter. Getting all of these updates of the awards that they were receiving. Whoops, I didn't want to do that yet. And also all of the awards that they received, second place and first place awards. So congratulations to all of them. They are pretty amazing. And next you'll see the picture of them at the ISEF competition. Pretty cool. And Unified Basketball. You know, it may actually be, this is one of those things where like, I don't know, because I went to the eighth grade and the sixth grade concerts. I was blown away, but I was blown away by this unified basketball team. They played Chappaqua. It was fantastic. What I really loved, the athletes were intense. They were cheering each other on and the crowd was just fantastic. All of our high school kids were there. Brian, I think in the next slide, you'll see him in the next slide. Yeah, you see Brian on the bottom in the middle. He's like, yeah. They were going, and Brian, MVP, MVP. And all the kids were chanting it. Our students were chanting for Greeley Kids, right? They were saying, let's go Greeley, right? Everything, it was just the most fantastic day. Our kids were incredible athletes. I mean, just fantastic, outstanding, great shots, just a good time had by all, good camaraderie for the entire district. And our students made us so proud playing in that game. And as they said at the end, I said, you won. And they said, it is not about winning, right? So just taking the true spirit of that. So just super awesome. You want to play that? Charlie Jacobs, you've heard me talk about him before. I talk about him a lot. Charlie Jacobs did Inside the Game with Charlie Jacobs. This is our student who announces a lot of our sports and he did announce this game as well. And Charlie took an opportunity to do a sort of, you know, inside sports. It's made it that.
Hello, everyone. I'm here with the Unified Basketball Team and today I have some questions for you guys. So first off, how did Unified Basketball begin and what was the reason behind starting the team?
So on 2022, the Assistant AD and the AD had a meeting about proposing a potential unified team. The kids seem. The kids seemed to love it, so that's kind of, the team's great.
How has the vibe been between the players and the coaches this season?
This season, we had a great mix of individuals who not only managed to improve their skills, but also managed to become friends.
How were the practices and what are they like?
We typically begin with free shooting, then we move into warmups. After that, we practice some drills such as dribbling, passing, rebounding, and defense. Then the end, practice with scrimmage and the Barcel's Spirit Squad.
How has the season been?
It's been good. I'm happy.
How did it feel to have the entire school cheering you guys on last week?
It make me happy and excited.
The energy was great. We were excited to have our fans there.
That's our cheer squad. Look at that, Jen.
What does the future of Unified Basketball look like?
We continue to play. And we're excited because we're going to keep having our summer games, right?
Yes.
Hopefully, there's a lot more teams at summer games.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy the rest of the season. Good luck, and you guys were playing great. I'd really loved announcing that game, so keep doing what you guys are doing.
Awesome. Well done, Charlie. And next, we move right into National Merit Scholarship Recipients. This is Remy Matta and Kelsey Vaccaro. They had National Merit $2,500 scholarships. So congratulations to them. Remember, this is based on scores from the PSATs and qualifying tests, and this just came out. So just fantastic. And congratulations to both of them, amazing students. We keep hearing about Aiden also, Aiden Aldea Lustig, the New York State Competitive Speech Champion. He made school history by winning the first championship in competitive speech. He finished first in Original Oratory, a discipline that requires students to write, memorize, and perform a 10-minute speech on a topic they have researched. His speech was on the need to have fear, and it earned him awards throughout this competitive season. He's going to travel to Phoenix later this month to compete in the National Speech and Debate Association's National Championship, where hopefully he will continue his historic season. That's how, like, that's like a first time ever. It's amazing. I know it. And celebration of our marly players, bringing it home with Can't Stop the Feeling. This was super fun to attend. Brought the audience on this journey through different songs and scenes and monologues. Everything, the Wampus kids were there, and they did something, a little bit of Willy Wonka and a little bit from the show Annie. Super fun. And again, I should have moved this, but. Chloe and Samantha attended the Scholastic Achievement Dinner with Mr. Walsh and our president, Lyra Stengel, where they were recognized in the county of school administrators. Very nice distinction. Startup final pitch night success. I mean, Tim, I feel like you need to present this and not me.
It was an amazing, amazing presentation where we had four teams that were selected in advance by a team of judges. And then there was the wild card. So all the kids, the other teams were presenting in the gymnasium, and the audience voted for the team. And a team to go on the stage that night. So they didn't even know if they were going to go on that night. And they voted for the scoop who went up that night, which was amazing. And the kids presented, and then there was selecting. We had our, so the scoop was the audience vote?
Yes, the audience vote was the scoop.
Right. And then we had the other team was Foot Fit, was the one the judges selected to go on to the national competition or be submit to the national competition, which was an amazing product that, there's a real need for this, but there isn't a product that exists to break in your shoe, particularly for athletes. It was athletes that are the ones who created it. But the judges are like, there's applications for all sorts of people to have a home-based one. You'll see like these giant machines that sports teams have, but there's no home.
That hold like 14 pair of cleats.
Right, right. Nothing for the home that you could buy at a consumer rate to just like break in your athletic shoes or other shoes.
So they found an interesting niche area where there isn't a lot of competition. It's kind of crazy.
And I want to thank our parents. We had 17 parents who mentored the teams, and they would meet with the kids regularly. They were texting them on the weekends. They would be helping give them advice. They came in throughout the school year. And we had a bunch of other parents who volunteered to be judges, as well as to come in and teach lessons based on their area of expertise. So overall, we had about 30 parents who came in and worked with our kids. And I saw one parent today, and she's so excited to join next year and see her next team.
She's amazing, too.
Yeah, she said, "I'm going to go buy a gift. Can I just come in any day to the school so I can give the kids a present?"
I know exactly what you're talking about, just from that description. I know, it is, right, you know.
I have to say, the presentations were amazing.
They were awesome.
They were impressive. But those kids, I mean, they were using, they understood terms about finance.
Sam, Tim, and all these.
I didn't know what they were talking about.
Making their expenses.
It was really impressive.
Right, and they were interrogated by five parents who didn't really hold back.
Some are parents.
Some are parents, community members, yeah. So we had these, asking them really hard questions, and they had to answer questions on the spot.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive.
Judges were.
I watched a lot of these teams. I'm like, oh, boy, that's going to be hard for them. These kids went right in, and they were able to answer questions I could not.
Did you ever done that when you were in high school? Yeah.
I still can't do it. Guys are asking me questions all the time.
And the next slide has some great pictures. Oh, wow.
It was amazing.
They really did a good job.
If I can thank Lisa Pellegrino and Jen Layden. We put a lot of time into this. Lisa was the emcee of it, and she was really terrific.
And next, how about the eighth grade mixed chorus? They won a silver rating at NISMIA. Congratulations to them. Awesome. And to all of our students who received awards at the High School Awards Ceremony, which took place last week. If you go to the next slide, Tim, we had the Principals Awards, the Vince Greco Award, given to Justin Wagner, the Michelle Del Ammonico Memorial Scholarship Award, went to Aiden Weiss, the PTSA Carullo Leadership Award, went to Tuda Odegi. High Blatch Jack Wallenberg went to Lily Feldman. I have to say that Lily gave a speech that was better than almost anything I'd ever heard. It was, nobody's going to be able to replicate that. I mean, it was absolutely outstanding. She talked about a trip, that she went on a class trip in the third grade, and what this person said and how that resonated with her clear to her adulthood now. It was just beautiful, really nice, really good message. Next, yay, tomorrow night, Science Research Symposium. Tim, I thought you would find this fascinating. Did you know that the symposium is inspired by the work of artist Sam Van Aken, who created, through grafting, a tree that bears 40 types of fruit? I don't know if you know this, but Tim has beautiful apple trees in his house in Pennsylvania, and he grafts them to create more apple trees with the precise types of apples.
Same DNA, right. From a tree that's over 100 years old.
In his spare time.
It's starting to die, and I wanted to say that. Strange, so. Yep, baby's who are now growing.
This science symposium is dedicated to Tim.
Hopefully, they grow. We got some rain finally.
Anyway, I'm really looking forward to this tomorrow night. It's going to be awesome. Very exciting. Next, we have Dario Amacucci breaking the 100-meter dash record for our school record. Woo! And you can take a little pic of that video. It's fun to see. That's when I know, I know I have to do this. Oh, my gosh. That's there. Unbelievable. You can't even, I think like he asked. Is that ridiculous? He had to go out the door. Dario, that is absolutely amazing to catch that ourselves. All right, next, we have our Global Scholars news. They had their showcase event this past Thursday. Want to talk about that, Tim? I was blown away. I am so impressed. It was part of what I was going to talk about, but you go talk.
You certainly can, but it was a showcase. It was our first annual. We've been wanting to do it. We kept putting it off, and finally Jen Layden said, "We're just going to do it. Let's do it."
And involving year-one students, year-three students.
So thank you to Jen Layden, Melissa Stahl, Duane Smith, Kim Goetz, and Lisa Squadron, the teachers of Global Scholars who put this together and said, "Let's get our kids presenting." So we had students who were, they did empathy interviews around sustainability, and they're designing some pitches for the Byron Hills Education Foundation to pitch ideas for how to make Byron Hills more sustainable. And they all presented, and we went around, and all the parents were going around to listen to their presentations and give them feedback as they start to get ready. So I was pretty critical on a few, on young Ashley Stengel, but oh, my gosh, she had an answer for everything. Their presentation is amazing. And then we went to the students in year two who have been working on their change projects. So students explore areas of their passion, and then they initiate something to make some change in the world. So they talked about their presentations, what they did to make an impact, and what the impact was. And they presented to groups of parents in breakout rooms. To hear these students talk was just.
It was so moving. It really was inspirational, absolutely.
Yeah, so thanks to all of these students. And then we had some students who presented this last Sunday. We've been involved in the Changemakers Project. It's an international project where students present their change projects. And then they, we had some students win some awards.
That's on the next page.
Oh, good. So we can go for that.
That's awesome.
So we had some news there.
Just awesome.
So thank you to the students. It's amazing to listen to their presentations, and they get asked questions during this. So then the Changemaker projects vote on the students.
And you have the names that are here of students who participated in the event and others who presented at the event on the next page.
One of the winning teams was the Pleasant Politics Party.
I love that.
Present a few teams.
I spoke with them when we did our lock, and they were fantastic.
The Pleasant Politics Party. How to have pleasant conversations about politics.
Really great idea. It's really resonating with people.
We can put Nacho on the road.
Let's do it. So we want to encourage this team out in the world at the beginning. And so the Changemakers voted on this.
They say, "Out of the mouths of babes comes the truth," right? It's their thought.
That's right, so.
The next one is others who were, yeah. And then now we have a little bit of Science Research students. Had a great showing at the Somers Science Fair. First place, Andrew Levy in Medicine and Health. And then Maya Malloy and Adriana Zurojek for Behavior. Congratulations. They had like over 600 kids, I think, there at that event.
First time getting our sophomores to present, so it's a new process. And again, thanks to Stephanie Greenwald, who comes up with these ideas, always getting our kids out there to present in the world. She's not afraid to push them out, you know, and it's really terrific. So I want to thank the Science Research teachers.
And just to say, they always come back because a certain graduate was one of the judges the other time.
Oh, yeah. And the next page is going to have second and third place winners, which is nice. Congratulations to them. Pretty amazing. And then, you know, this is not the Stengel Show, but. Emily Stengel was nominated for a Citizenship Award. This is a huge deal. Shelley Mayer nominated her as the recipient of the Shelley Mayer 2023 Citizenship Award for her work and dedication to our community, which is amazing and well-deserved. And this is actually a very big deal. If you think about all of the kids at all of the schools in Westchester. It's pretty extraordinary. And. And that's it. Go Bobcats.
Is that all?
That's it, that's it. We have amazing kids. We really do. We have an amazing district. We do wonderful things. Wait, did we meet two weeks ago? This happened in two weeks.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you so much. Anything else from, Tim, are you tired?
That was what you wanted to know.
So I just wanted to quickly say that I did attend the Carol Johnson Scholastic Achievement Dinner that Jen mentioned, and I just wanted to say that Jen was the, what was your title, chairperson of the event. She did a wonderful job. It was a wonderful event. I got to sit on the dais with her. I was her plus one. And I guess the superintendent from Rye City, is it? Was the president of the organization. And his board president was on his right. So it was very, very interesting perspective, and it was attended by about 450 from around, is it Rockland?
Students in Rockland, Putnam, and Westchester County.
And just a very impressive group of children and superintendents and teachers all being very, and principals just being there. Chris came as well, and you did a wonderful job, and you spoke so well. It was a lovely event. I was very, very proud to be there.
It was nice to be at an event like that again.
Yes. And then again, just about the Global Scholar Showcase. I think that, you know, for many years, we were here, members of this board were here for the inception of that program. And it's elevated to a point where, I was so proud to be at that event and listen to the keynote speaker in our room and just all the, you know, just being socially conscious and things about just helping, you know. One of the Changemaker projects in our room was the food insecurity and poverty and how one student is doing documentaries and just that they were doing, another student did, made a, sorry, an essay winning, an essay contest online and developed the whole thing and is disseminating all this information out there. I just, it was just very, very impressive. I was very happy and proud.
It's very personal to their own interests and passions.
To their own issues, but the way they all spoke, they were so poised. And it was just very nice to see because you're usually used to seeing all of that with science research and to see that on a global level.
Or in a humanity's.
Yeah, humanity levels. Very, very, very wonderful. So thank you so much. So that's all I had.
Our kids are going to leave here being able to talk to the world.
They are. They do. They do. They leave with such a foundation.
They know how to communicate.
And then I just also wanted to say, you can't see, but there's beautiful artwork in this room. And I'm so pleased to see it this year because we, it's, everything is sort of back this year, and it's just a pleasure to see, so I'm very grateful for that. Okay, so that's all I had. Did anybody have any other word? Okay, reports, nothing. Okay. And let's see, we have communications, topics for future agendas. I don't think we have anything right now, but we'll figure that out as we go on. Communication to the board, I didn't have any. But, oh, we want to make sure we get invitation to the Science Research Symposium, which is tomorrow night, which we just mentioned. So hopefully, we can all attend that. And can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education Minutes from the May 16th, 2023? Was anyone absent at that meeting? Everybody was there. Well, Jason's not here tonight, but any changes? I didn't see anything. Okay, can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thank you.